We celebrated the 14th anniversary, but we called for government. Government did not reply us. But all what they did was to come and attack us with the army. Beat some of us, imprison some of us, kill some of us. Sue us to court, the lawyers of Cameroon, even some from La Republique came and supported us. Were jailed for 47 days. And the behavior of our men in America, in Germany, in the United UK, the UK made them fear. You are demonstrationists, need us to be free. And when we were freed, we decided not to go back. That is why we came here. Why did we come here? We went to the east to tell them our story. They say we'll support you. We came to the west and we found Nigeria, who were those who went because where we refused to give under anybody that the Cameroon, southern Cameroon itself. To help us to go ahead because we are not going to court, we are not recognized by the United Nations, we are not recognized by the people of the world court. Nigeria told us, well, we do understand, we see you people, we see how you suffer, but we cannot help you. So, in the long run, we looked at papers. We look at documents that had brought out after 30 years of British rule. And those documents showed us what the British had done. So we sued Nigeria to court. It was a surprise. They couldn't think this war people from southern Cameroon could sue the big country Nigeria, the biggest country in the continent. The case went on for a number of months. In the long run, the chief of the Board of Justice in the Republic of Nigeria agreed that the case is a good case to be taken to court. Nigeria tried to rule it out in a democratic court, they could not win. In Cameroon, late 14, I tried to sue. The man who received our papers was dismissed from this one. So we sued Nigeria. Went to court. In the long run, we were freed. We won the case because Nigeria had no ruling. We got papers of the United Nations, papers of the Banjou Conference, which made our country to be held by any country we visited, the way we came to. So Nigeria was forced by the court to take up our case. They sent people who took our case to the Hague. They were not agreed, they were not accepted to enter the Hague because they say they had a visa to enter by Germany. Since they entered by the Hague, they cannot be placed into, they cannot enter. Then they cancelled their visas, instead of saying, go and find by the Hague. He went back to Nigeria. And so, the tenant government said, well, perhaps we can help you, but let the people of southern Cameroon pay their way for you. Because this fight is for them, why should they stay quietly and make you suffer? But who can help us? Every person in West Cameroon or southern Cameroon as we call it now was afraid. Nobody can hear anything spoken in public. The governors passed laws, nobody can speak calling the name of that political party, which is the case unity of the Cameroon, that they forgot that. The unity of the Cameroon was destroyed by La Republique. They declared themselves what they were in 1960 and refused everything which was created later. So, we are now in the United States of America. The people from Lagos are looking at us to help them pay their way. They have to eat, they have to sleep here. That's why I have come here. That's why other friends are in London and they are to go to the Hague. Some have been sent to East Africa, they have no money, we have anglophone, it's the word you want to do. We cannot buy food to East African countries. So you better, I'm going to certain areas, states of the United States. I've come here to see you. If you're only one man from southern Cameroon, I beg you, walk hard to defend your southern Cameroon and to make it a free country so that you can come to your country as a man who is liberal, free and can be accepted by their brothers and sisters. You should not come there as slaves. You will be beaten, they will treat you anyhow. They are making cases that we do not have and your fathers' houses are burnt, beaten, jailed, some die in jail. And the few of us who are out, they are waiting for me. I'll go back to accept the jail, whether it's by cutting out the neck, whether it is by opening the door, I want to go back and see what they will do. But it is you who can support us. If you are not able to support us, I'm telling you the truth, what is the reason? Recently, I was called up to be a rogue ambassador. I refused. A rogue ambassador, the best, the little morning that comes with the clothes. So I refused it. If I die, if you're a man die, if you're a man die and you did nothing to fight for your libert, the problem is that you will still be a slave to La Republique Cameroon who have counsel, who have body against all the rules, all the antipodes of the United Nations and who have made us servants. None of you, none of an anglophone is a leader, an ambassador in any anglophone countries of the world. Any country which gives no money, no anglophone is there. You can only be a servant there, you cannot be a master. That's where we are. I have had enough. I can die. The word have you had? One day you will have to be told, if you do not know, that you are a foreigner in this country. One day when you are old, you will have to move, which home shall you go to? Please tell me. All my help, all the help of southern Cameroonian has to come from you.
Thank you very much. We have a few questions here and anybody else has more questions, you can bring them up. We'll try to see what we can do in the remaining 30 minutes that we have. Some of these questions, you will have the answers to in this leaflet that Kennedy has by the door. And I know all of you in this country have to be used to the internet. If you were to go on to the British Cameroon, southern Cameroon site, the SCNC site, there are so many sites, just put in southern Camerons and they all fill out. You will read everything, the history and everything. One other thing Kennedy did not say about Dr. Luma is that he was the first Vice Minister of National Education. And as you've all gathered, everything is telling us, he has personal experience. We do not need to refer to any history that might be falsified and not in our favor or trying to make us understand that we are second-class citizens. We do have people who believe the experience and we need to seize this opportunity. But before I look at these questions or I state the questions that we have here, I really would like Kennedy Wana to say something because the youth wing is very active and we really want to talk about it.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. What I want to say is that it is a pleasure, well, maybe it's a pleasure to have a few of you here. But would it be a pleasure to our people? That's the question that all of us have to cook with. Because it will not matter for us to sit here and listen to all of this and we go back to what we were before. And we have Dr. Luma here, who is coming from Nigeria. If you go by the cop case in Nigeria, you will see how, I'm sorry to say, how stupid we are, how stupid we have been. In their own time, they had a reason, or they can give us a reason, which maybe me, I cannot see it, as I don't see it now, that they did not know what they were entering into, that they were not sure of themselves, that they had no school. What reason do we have? We have doctors, we have professors, some of us here, most of us have gone to school. We've read our history, we know our history, we know the suffering under which we are living in. We've listened to over the CRTV, we've heard insults from members of the government to us there. What do we think? We are so insulated that nothing can touch us, even when they call us Biafrans. We think that it is some other people that they are talking about. It is not us. There's enemy down the road. No, it is not me. It is us. We are the people that they are talking about. What can we do? What have we done? How many of us came into that door, sure of himself that my identity is a southern Cameroonian? How many? For us, it is a means, can use it as a means to get out of a difficulty. For some of us, for some of us, it is like, you know, an idea to just take and play around with. How many of us really believe in the fact that he's a southern Cameroonian? I'll bet not up to 50% here, I'm sure, maybe I'm assuming too much. But I for one, I know that I have no other nationality than a southern Cameroonian. So I believe myself to be a still less citizen. And if we don't have that belief, that we are still less citizens, we not accomplish what we are out to get our own issue out of slavery. But the people back home have shown us that they believe they are still less citizens and they are fighting for that. The greatest disappointment has come from our people in the diaspora, those of us here. Other countries, their people that are out of the country, that are able to live in a free society, that are able to go to work and work and use their money and use their income on themselves and on their family without even thinking that, you know, I have so many restrictions that I cannot be what I am. Those are the people that have provided the engine for the liberation of their country. Our home is the opposite. Our people back home suffer, a lot of them have died without our community, those that totally change how we live, contributing a single thing. The first contribution we can make is by changing the way we think. Because we can change our lives, we can get out of that ball, a totally different people. Just, I am a southern Cameroonian from today. Anywhere you go, the first question they ask you, where are you from? I am a southern Cameroonian and that is what I do. And I have been able to answer many questions. I am a southern Cameroonian, why is that? And I explain our history and that, just one person pushes us further to a rule of emancipation, of liberation. So we should accept our rule because others at home have accepted their rule. I am a child of slave, I am a child of colonization. I was born under that, so I was delivered under that. So I wasn't like Payer who lived in freedom, in quotes, before getting into colonization. So all of the doctrine that they taught us from childhood, childhood, in primary school, I had absorbed them. And for me, standing here and talk and saying this, it shows that they have not succeeded. The chairman of the Southern Cameroonian unit is in jail. He has been in jail now for over five years, Benesav Kwanga, he has been tortured, over nine of them have died. And the greatest lie that that can show us, what could show us is that one of them who was released from that jail after those tortured died in the October 1 celebration, he got out of there under those torture that they told him, it was changed, that they are rebellious thinking, still got out, was able to go out there and still grew in front of the Jandans and was killed there. That is matador. Those are the matas of our people. Can we support them? Can we do that place? That is a simple question. Things are moving back home. A lot of our people are working for our liberation every day and they are dying. In May 20, the forces of occupation got out from their beds and they discovered that the program of education and identity has started in our territory. There were flags of the southern Cameroonian all over. And for the first time, they had to celebrate our colonization under our flag, not their own. We don't even have a champion of the flag here, so maybe some of you don't know the flag.
Should I go with white?
Yes, yes. The 30 stars for the text. So that is a pride. It would be a great thing for all of us here, for me tomorrow to, you know, to go to your house and the first thing I see is the flag of the southern Cameroonian, of the southern Camerons flying, you know, proudly in front of your door. That is how the East Timorese, the Cusovas, all of those people. But there is one simple and uncontrollable fact, that we must fight for our freedom. It wouldn't come from anywhere else. We will have to do it. Payer is here, he's telling you that he's going and he might be going to die. It is very clear and it is very serious and it is very true. Because he was there in October 1, they took them to jail. And the case is still pending. And they went to Nigeria and they got our identity from a court of law. Other countries have fought for their independence without legality and gaining. We have all the legal instruments on our side. But we are not fighting. It must come from you. Let us get together as a community, believing in our independence, in our identity, and let us support the struggle back home. And we should change that thinking from just, we should change the thinking to be, to take it as a business enterprise, to put in an effort, knowing the goal that we have and accomplishing it. Because we have been fighting the struggle as La Republique, you know, the way they treat their companies, just carry you, they appoint you director there and you run the company to the ground, there's no money, you don't put your heart into it, you don't put any effort into it, you take from it. What we should do is to give, to put effort, to know that there is a simple goal, our humanity, to reclaim that. Because we are, we are inhuman, the treatment that we are under, it is inhuman. And if we believe in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, then all of us should reclaim our humanity by total, by total commitment. And we need that. We are prepared and we have shown that we can defend our people. And the UDLI is the dog between the sheep and the wolf. And we have shown the wolf that will not back down. So basically, that is all I have to say to you people. And to say it very clearly, that things have happened since from 1997. A lot of our people are able to stand and say that I will die for the struggle and they have died. More than nine international, more than 15 are internationally known to have died for the struggle, for the people of southern, for their identity. But it is hundreds of thousands that have died without the international community knowing. But we will defend ourselves, what we do need. And that is the message that is coming from the classroom, is the support of the people who are living in free country where others have died to liberate that country. We need that support. And it will be going because those guys have shown us very clearly that when you support them, they will be able to accomplish that goal. So, my fellow countrymen, one day the common man of our people will ask me a simple question. Where were you? What did you do? When our land was being consumed by the forces of hatred and colonialism like a little flame, what will be your answer?
Thank you, Kennedy. I have some questions here. I think a lot of these questions, I will ask the Deputy Communications Commissioner to answer them because especially being out here in the US, sometimes we think there's nothing much we can do, but there have been people who have been active and we would like you to know ways in which this is being done and ways in which you can contribute to regaining your own land to yourself, to having the rights to actually exist as a human being on your own soil without any fear of anybody telling you you do not belong. One of the first questions I have, which I think Larry can answer mainly faster easily is, what are the objectives of the SCNC? What is the goal of the SCNC?
The SCNC is aimed to restore the sovereignty of the annexed Republic of Southern Camerons. Southern Cameroon is an independent entity as Dr. Luma has stated very clearly, which gained its independence on October 11, 1961, when La Republique Cameroon had been independent and Nigeria had been independent. We are a territory which got into a parliamentary reunion with La Republique Cameroon and they have broken that union and they succeed it. Our goal is to restore our sovereignty. We have a website, www.southerncamerons.org. We are a non-profit organization in the United States. You can support us by writing a check to US British Southern Camerons and discuss the document. On the 10th of June, we are at the United Nations to force the international community, we are going to play to the Court of World Opinion to help us enfray ourselves. We are not a part of La Republique Cameroon. The history has been falsified, we have those who were 30 years old when that international conspiracy between France and Britain was occurring and they are here alive to tell us the story.
One thing we'd like to, which would be very useful for us to understand why Cameroon consumed Nigeria, is to understand the Banjou Agreement that African countries signed and Nigeria is one of the countries that signed that and that was signed in 19...
It is the 1919 African Charter of Human and People's Rights. It was ratified in Banjou, Cameroon. This is an international treaty ratified by the nations of Africa, that no nation or no people can be under the oppression of another nation. And that when such a situation of oppression is occurring, whether they are a tribal entity, whether they are an ethnic group, whether they are individuals, whether they are an association or a nation, it is incumbent on the other nations of Africa to table their problem to international jurisdiction, the United Nations, the Organization of African Unity, the International Court of Justice. And because Nigeria ratified that Banjou Treaty for the, which is the Charter of Human and People's Rights, African Human and People's Rights, there was incumbent on the Nigerian government, which is a nation of law, because this is what is happening now. Because of the rule of law, even Paul Bia would be under the obligation of answering to I and you as a nation, as sovereign people. The countries of Europe like Belgium have now passed jurisdiction, where any dictator who has abused human rights in any part of the world, when he says for Belgium, he will have to answer for his crimes. Very soon, this United States of America will be forced to climb up to that universal standard, where dictators, they will be under the obligation of not dealing with dictators, they have that obligation. Because if they don't do that, they will betray the fundamental principles that they try in this nation. So that is the jurisdiction that Dr. Luma and very brilliant southern Camerooners, because they found a major difference, as Mr. Wana said here. Why we cannot play the morning, morning quarterbacking by blaming the, oh, why did they do this? People like Lukow, who stood against the dictatorship, they were incarcerated for years, nobody had the power to stand up. In those days, there was no internet, there was no democratization of freedoms in terms of like internet, where something is happening in Cameroon, you can send an email to America and then the amnesty international will stand up, or there were no Cameroonians here who were in connection with the world, who could plead for that case. So then people who were, who were under the assassination of that dictatorship died. But today, we don't have that kind of situation, we are in a free, in the free world and we can say something to help our brother there. So this is the responsibility and the evolution of freedom, we are being free. So we have to do something. Who will be to blame when we go to, if I go to Marvi and the Jandans slap me, when in America, it means that nobody can touch me?
I have one question here about the relationship between the SDF and the SCNC and is there a leadership crisis in the SCNC? In other words, with the president, vice president, etc. And then the third part is, how is the SCNC organized? How do we get information to the grassroots of the SCNC? Before I answer the question, I always would like to point out to people that this situation, this problem, it's not a problem between two individuals, it's not a problem between a Franco-Fun and an Anglo-Fun. We relate very well, we have our friends, we have our families. This is a matter of policy, this is a matter of government and how the general practice has been. I also like to point out that the SCNC is not a party, you are not born into a political party, you choose. Southern Camerons is the name that was given to that land that we come from. Southern Camerons is the name of the land that was never granted its independence by the British. And that's why sometimes you see us attach British Southern Camerons to me because it is a way to remind them that you left something undone, you messed up something and it is not resolved. And if we have to have any issues of names, we will discuss it after you have resolved this issue right now. So we should also always bear in mind that we belong to Southern Camerons, we choose our parties. Hey, I can be saying anything today, tomorrow if I want to join the CPDM, I could do it, but right now I don't belong to any party because I don't really have time to start dealing with party issues. But we should always know that there is this big difference between what you belong to and what you were born into. So Larry, if you want to...
Yeah, I'm going to answer the question about the leadership crisis in SCNC, the so-called leadership crisis in SCNC. And I'm going to answer the issue about the SCNC. Let me tell you something. Dr. Luma who's sitting here is a founding member of the Social Democratic Front. I was the foundation, the pioneer president of the Social Democratic
I was the foundation, the pioneer president of the Social Democratic Front from 1990 to 1994, when I left the country. I worked for CRTV. I was the only government journalist who stood out and stuck out my neck against the government of La Republic Cameroona and I joined John Frumini, I'm from Mavie. People told me, "Why are you joining the Bambida Man?" I said, "No, I'm fighting for freedom. Anybody who will lead for freedom, I'll follow them." Now, they talk about the leadership crisis in Southern Cameroons. Let me tell you one thing. The Southern Cameroons is the only democratic organization where we can kick out leaders when we don't like, when they don't fulfill our collateral responsibility. They have five additional responsibilities to us. They have to help us free our country, they have to be accountable, they have to do their job. When they don't do it, we, sitting here, we shall free them. I was talking to Mr. Mokete, that it's no more the CPD and kind of paternalistic system where some central committee members will come from their own and come and break branches. I'll come and look on Melissa, because Melissa is my friend, and say, "Okay, Melissa, you're going to be the chairman of SCNC here in Minnesota." We cannot have that. Or, "I came here and she cooked me some good eba." I will say, "Well, I give you a power of authority. Melissa, you're going to create the Southern Cameroons here and everybody." As we see some who claim to be Democrats in Cameroon and I do. But we will challenge them. And I want to be challenged. Every political party in Cameroon which is colluding with the dictatorship in Cameroons to produce a veneer of democracy, to do window dressing. But Mr. Bia, who is now warring in the money which is being given by the Exxon Mobil and the World Bank to create a pipeline, to say, "Well, the opposition is already in party." That is a fallacy, that is a fraud. And we are fighting for the hearts and the souls of Southern Cameroonians. I want people to look at, how can you be fighting for freedom and you are in a parliament which oppresses you, where people are being killed, where they don't have the right to present even a private member's name? Mr. Bia discovered that people in Cameroon were poor and they were creating political parties. So he gave money, before I left Cameroon in 1994, where one hundred and four political parties created so that it should be a number, but it to the CPD. Because of the economic problems in Cameroon, people are now joining political parties to have some money. I want to tell you, you are the freest people in the world. You are the freest Cameroonians in the world. I am like, as a CRTV journalist, when I came to America, I was a security guard and I was earning ten times more money than I earned in CRTV. And nobody writes my check for me from Cameroon. So I can stand there and criticize the government of Cameroon. We should be very careful. We have been telling Franco-Franz that we are objective people, we are accountable people, we are, we have adopted the British system of freedom. Let us not betray ourselves by starting paternalistic organizations where dictators will mount and begin to lord it over us and pretend that they are political parties. We have run away from that system, I run away from Bia's dictatorship, I will never be under any dictatorship. The change of leadership in the SCNC is the greatest exhibition of the democratization process that we are living. It is good for people to have the right to change their governments. When they see us change our governments like that, they don't understand, they think that we are Bia. They say, "Crisis." No, we have the right. When a leader is not working tomorrow, my humble servant Darrie Eo, if I go back to Washington and I'm not doing the job of Southern Cameroons, they can kick me out. You will kick me out on your life, thank you.
One last question we have to be out of here. I have a question here which states, what is the fallback position of the SCNC?
I will allow the chairman to answer, but let me answer briefly. I am a student of history. What is the fallback position of the people who are pushed to the wall? They fight back. Uella Musumbeni has created village resistance armies. Americans fought against the British, they created an army. George Washington fought. The East Timorese have fought against the far largest army in the world, that of Indonesia, and have won, of the 90 who were there the other day to congratulate the courage of those people. What is our fallback position? You know what it is. Fight back. Every human people who have been oppressed and dominated, when we have DUs from the Franco-Franz areas come and they are in all over our country, even those who were not ready to fight, when they went there and they were assaulted and assaulted, they came back and they said, "No, it's a time we have led the democratic action in Northern America." People fight. The British said one thing about the difference between they and Africans. They said, "We have the Maxim gun and they don't have it." That's the difference. Are we going to stay on the sidewalk, we don't have a Maxim gun, when our reservoirs... There's supposed to be equality of weapons in the battle. If La Republic Cameroona throws a bazooka at us, we should throw the bazooka. We cannot throw the stone. We are not going to be like the Palestinians. When they throw a bazooka, we'll throw a bazooka. And we shall sit down on the table and negotiate. People don't negotiate with our position of weakness. If you want to fight for your freedom, you have to fight. If you want to remain enslaved, you can remain. That's my position.
Well, if you want to find the fallback positions, the kind of positions, you will tell us what the position is. We have said, we are not using arms, we are not doing anything. We are using the truth, the law codes, the United Nations to take decisions. If they accept that all their regulations are everything, all their laws are infused by one little country in the world and they accept it. And if they don't accept what we have said, they want us to fight our way. I am very, very sorry. I am very, very sorry. To be a small nation does not make you a small warrior. And I tell you the truth, I said it about a year ago, in northern Nigeria, when you questioned me. I said it. We are counting the people dying. We are exposed to dying. But we know that in this world, in this African continent, and outside the African continent, we have friends. We don't have money to buy wood. So if you are using your rubber, we shall not take the story. We'll use the same thing to destroy you. And the power of Southern Cameroon is not yet known. Those who want to know it, we better sit quiet and finish the matter in peace. If they don't know it, they are destroying themselves.
Thank you so much, Steve. I'm a Christian, and Jesus Christ said in the Bible, "He who has no soul should sell his cloak and buy a sock."
Well, thank you all so much. We have to stop now. You remember that we have the fundraising dinner, probably in Canada Hall. The minimum donation is $25. And I know the way you guys work so hard, a lot of you will be able to give even twice that amount. Just come on over and have dinner with us and support the struggle.
We are so thankful to the Minnesota group. You guys are a small group and you have been so wonderful. So in fact, Barb is giving better marks to Minnesota than to Washington. Amashay to say, you say, it's that, thank you, thank you very much.